All right, we will call the Sartell City Special Workshop to order for Tuesday, November twenty first. Look for agenda approval and adoption.
I'll approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
I.
I.
All right. Post. That carries. Um. Next order would be to suspend the rule of order. Look for a motion to do that. That's just so that we don't have to, we can talk freely and not have to have motions. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
I.
Post. That carries. Like, that's all I had to do, right?
That's all you had to do. Nice job. Um. So I sent out, I sent an email on Friday, I think it was Friday. Um. Hope folks had a chance to read through that. Um, you know, this meeting was precipitated by some email correspondence, but uh, and we can certainly talk about that. This is something that goes deeper than that, though. Um, this is something that um, you know, the city has worked on before, as I noted in the email, and it's something that's fairly common in local government. Um, but you know, there's a couple of points I I tried to flesh out in the email from my observations and talking with staff and talking with um, individual council members here. Um, talked about the word trust got thrown around a lot. Um. And that's kind of a big broad word used for a lot of different things, but I think the real issues um, kind of relate to information and then um kind of that minority majority split and how that is addressed in terms of at the meetings and outside of meetings. Um, so wanted to just kind of open it up for discussion about, you know, where the council's at? Where you want to get to? Talking about some expectations that you guys can have some consensus on that you expect from each other and would hold each other um, too. Um, I know you're going through some governance um, policy work, um, which is great. And I'm all honesty, though, I mean, that's just a tool. That's not gonna fix the issues. Um, I hope it helps you build towards a place, but it's gonna take some commitment and some candidness about um, how you guys interact, how you conduct yourself in council chambers and interactions with staff and and helping the public. Um, that said, you know, the the council can't censor or muzzle or whatever the term you wanna use, any individual. Um, so it's, it's really about having a discussion and shared vision of 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 how you guys do what you do as elected officials within the city. So I don't know if you wanna start talking about, you know, kind of what precipitated this um, or where you wanna go, but I'm hoping this is a dialogue. I'm not gonna be preaching to you. I'll answer questions, help, you know, kind of serve as a guidepost for the discussion. Um, but I, I think it's on all five of you to to kind of walk through some of this stuff, even if it's uncomfortable or or gets you animated. I mean, that's one of the things we need to talk about is is how to how to meet everybody where everybody's at in terms of communication style and expectations. So, I mean.
Well, I can start if that's okay. Um. I think that there are a lot of issues as you've, as you've kind of alluded to. Um, I think what I'd like to start with is addressing a particular interaction between myself and Councilmember Meyer. Um. Through this whole discussion, I think a lot of these other issues are going to be revealed. Um, but I do want to make sure that this gets addressed. On November seventh, I received three emails between the times of ten thirty and seven fifteen, you know, from Councilmember Meyer. Each new email had a little different variation to it, but I'll read one of them for public awareness and to avoid any additional data requests of the city may incumbent. So this particular email was Tuesday, November seventh at ten thirty P M. There was no subject heading. It reads, your lack of integrity and continuous manipulation abounds. It is absolutely laughable. You say we need to be held to higher standard as council at coffee with me. You deliberately go after Jason on solar. No one thinks stiff. It was intentional and deliberate. You had a grad party at golf course. You just gave money to your neighbor's friend without gave away to your neighbor's friend without abstaining. You cannot make it up, and you're not fooling anyone. A complete joke. Attached to the email was a screenshot from a newsletter, newsletter article dated eleven three with the following excerpt circled and highlighted. In an interview October twenty five with the newsletters, Councilmember Jill Smith further explained why she voted against the solar ordinance. Public input, she said, should have been considered more closely. Those were the two items highlighted and circled. Um. This email was then forwarded by Councilmember Meyer to all other city council members violating open meeting law. Uh, I asked Councilmember Meyer to discontinue communication with me. Um. In that format, as it was unwellcome and condescending, he proceeded to reply two additional times defending his actions. Um, I want to be clear that the goal of this is not public embarrassment, but the goal is being transparent to our community and finding a way forward. As a council, we have a breakdown in communication as we've kind of circled around. We have a duty to be productive unit of government, and I'd like us to utilize this time together to discuss these issues and
I responded, obviously, it was a emotional response frustrated by and and the second time into the community into the paper where felt like it was seriously misrepresented. Um, I think um one of those responses actually to returning um, that you're referencing. Um, you know, how I said what I said had emotion in it, what what I said I I, we have a lot to talk about tonight to get through where those feelings actually come from. Um, I read that article and it basically said, we didn't listen to the public. We didn't work well enough for the planning commission. We didn't do our job and we've had multiple discussions uh, in our time, including when I was brought into uh, council here, where I think I was through my orientation, was said, you know, we criticize privately and we celebrate publicly when we can. And I felt like that was ultimately going ultimately against the really the bulk, because I really felt like we did listen to the public. We did work with planning commission more than any other ordinance in my time here on council significantly. And it feels like it's intentional or out there in the paper um, saying those things, because I have to answer those questions. The previous email or quote in the paper was in July where it was said that it was five oh and it was surprise at the very end of the golf course thing. Um. And it was, uh, I brought that forward uh, back to uh, people who made the the quote in staff and I said, um, that's not accurate. Nobody thinks that I ever agreed with the price or the structure of this deal and um, I was responding with, I'm not retracting or restating. So my next step in opportunity, what I'm supposed to do is is email the personnel council, which I did, and I said, hey, this is not fair. This is not right. This is never five oh um, to misrepresent in the community is not right. Um, it's plain politics, especially when it's not us, like we, I can't control what you say in the paper. I get frustrated by it. Um. You know, and but when it's it's staff and personnel committee, that was five months ago. I've heard nothing from personal committee, not one feedback. Um, so that's broken. That's something we need to talk about as well, and um, we've had personal conversations where we said we would defend. I said to you, you said to me, we said we would pu- uh, defend each other publicly, even when we disagree. And I felt like I followed that significantly, especially through the golf course piece. When people were questioning integrity, I can read a response uh, from an email or people were concerned about maybe the conflict of interest of of relationships or neighbors and um, um, maybe previous hockey is hockey votes and some of that stuff. My response oftentimes was, and well, you're so funny, this wasn't a response to that person. On the ethics question, others have asked me that, too, but we're in a small town. It can become tough, as a lot of us know each other. I I have not known, known Councilmember Smith for long, but I personally always want to start with trust. When I spoke to her on this issue, she's passionate about keeping it a golf course, getting a restaurant, a new restaurant for citizens that people can easily bike to. She has some fear about future liabilities on the course uh, that could pose to taxpayers. We simply disagree on how this city should move forward and accomplishing this dealing with this property.
I'm sorry, can you clarify where you're setting that from or who?
That was an email I sent back to a community resident resident uh, during the golf course conversation questioning your ethics. This is an example of what I said to you where I would even when I disagree on an issue, I would publicly um defend uh, when people come at the ethics. I think you did it the other night in front of council. I appreciated that comment, like, you know, because public perception is gonna go off on contentious issues.
So I just wanna, you know, obviously, you were writing to a resident that was questioning my ethics or my um my character, right? And so I just wanna be clear about when I'm, when I was talking to the newsletter, I was the only dissenting vote on this particular issue. I was clear that I supported solar. I I thought we needed to pause, consider the feedback we got in the survey that we all agreed was what needed to be done. Um, and and review that in the context of of the ordinance and and what maybe should be changed or not changed. We didn't do, we didn't take that time as a council to do that. And so I just wanna make be clear, like defending somebody's character or defending somebody's ethics versus me making a statement in the paper about my decision for a vote.
I think it comes down to, though, more than that, right? Because the way you say what you say matters. Right? And and that way I read that email, my emotional ser- where I, the way I read that article, my emotional response to that was you didn't do your job. You didn't listen to the community. You didn't do enough of it.
Can I see that? I have not seen the article. I I think it's helpful to maybe talk about this in terms of a concrete example. So, I mean, it says further explain why she voted against the solar ordinance. And so I just kind of wanna unpack that a little bit. I mean, part of, part of that majority minority is allowing folks to feel comfortable to express an opinion that might not be the same. Um, and the flip side of that is respecting the minority or the majority decision if you're on, you know, in the minority on that, but help me understand the concern when, I mean, i- it is appropriate to explain your position. I mean, I'm trying to understand.
Agree, disagree publicly, that's fine. I mean, we can say whatever we want in the paper if you want, but how you say what you say is important. And I felt like when it talked about um, we didn't listen or didn't work long enough with the planning commission. We we, there was three different times during this order and we went back to the planning commission. There was three, maybe four public hearings on an ordinance. Um, I I felt like we had done those things. And so to say I disagree and 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 some of those things, that's fine, but I'll bring you back to the context on the golf course. That type of article or interviews, not something that I did in a dissenting opinion. You know, if you listen to every single public comment that I made post that vote being done, including the night of the meeting and the recording, it's time to move forward. The council's made a decision. It's time to move forward, including the person purchasing asking me, saying, hey, my business is getting attacked. Can you get out there and say that on this post? Of course, I'll get out there and say that on the post. I don't feel like that's the same respect. I feel like that five oh comment and not getting a response back from personal committee, which
It's not having anything to do with.
It has everything to do with how I feel about how uh, we are representing a council.
Why does that build upon your concern with what I had said in this article? Because that had nothing to do with me. I don't understand why this is cumulative against me. Because I had nothing to do with what was in the paper previously relating to the golf course.
But you also, but you also said on personal committee, didn't respond. So you don't, you felt like you didn't respect.
That's not true. Actually, Ryan and I had a conversation and and said, Anna reached out with you individually, and she attempted a multiple accounts in my.
We did have that conversation. That wasn't uh, I don't think we were copied on her reach out, right? So I don't speak to that, but we had a conversation about it. I would consider it still an open item. Um. And I think that's, that is what led us to some of the consultant work that we're now um, I guess kicking off is some of that structure. I I would tell you that um read the article, um looked at it. I I don't know how I would describe my reaction, um, but was just like to each their own. Um. We all have the ability to make statements, right? Um. I try super, super hard to in in my role as mayor to suppress my personal statements and try and speak for the larger. Um. I'll give you an example. Two Thursdays ago, I had a former uh, council member approach me and wanna talk about the golf course. Where are we at on the golf course? Is this gonna happen? And I had to look the individual and I and say, the majority of council has decided to sell the golf course. We are selling the golf course, right? And unless the majority decides differently, we're selling the golf course. And I think that's on all of us, right? Like, we all are, have friend groups, social groups. Um. It's like we owe it to each other to continue those conversations and represent in that way. Um. We all have our own opinion, right? And so when my wife and I are talking privately, do I agree with everything our council makes a decision on? No, right? But when we're in the public setting, I think we owe it to all of us to kind of come together. And I think I can think back to previous councils. Situation would be the um, community center. Council made a decision where the community center is gonna go, right? And there are certain individuals on that council at the time that continue to try and like not fund the community center through the building process because it wasn't where they wanted it. And it's like we've gotta be productive together. We've gotta um, on the golf course, move forward. Right? Unless council wants to change their mind, we've gotta move forward on solar. We've gotta move forward. The majority of council spoke, right? Um, and so I think with that drag it out of my soapbox, but with the ability to speak freely comes with a lot of responsibility. Right? And I think as I've heard that we kicked off here, one council member spoke freely, one council member didn't like that conversation or didn't like the comment, right? That's also the opportunity of that council member to not like a comment and have a conversation. I hope to God we never get to a point where publicly, we're having this conversation or we're um we're going back and forth publicly, but I think this is healthy. Like, this is super healthy for us. And the last thing I'll say is I hope we can as we've been having like open dialogue and not trying to create soundbites or anything of that nature. Um. I don't love that this is being recorded. Um. I I think we as a council need to have some honest conversation, and I hope we can kind of forget the recording and have honest conversation. But I don't know that the recording does much for the community. Like, this is the inner workings of council and how to five individuals with unique backgrounds come together and do good for the community as a whole. I hope it's just, it's not. We don't leverage tonight as a a way to create soundbites on the community.
So what is the, I mean, do folks have thoughts on the forum, the the mechanism by which, I mean, you obviously have to comply with open meeting law, but you know, how to express opinions to one another when you're outside of sitting at the council dais, because that that I think is is a source of this. I mean, how do you what's your expectation for each other and and how you deal with that?
That's what I'm saying, my frustration came with, because in all other conversations, we've had conversations about that and since you read the email, I wanna unpack it a little bit here because I think it's important. Number one, I don't think old meeting laws, there's nothing in there that wasn't from a past vote. And so sending email uh, doesn't um, constitute open meeting law. So I
Heard that very true.
I would say the forwarding it is is problematic. I I would discourage you from having, even if you're not saying, hey, we should vote this way. I mean, that's, that is council business and I'd, I'd just encourage you not to be having that dialogue, even if it's, you know, a forward or some kind of serial manner.
And that's fair. I think there's other serial conversation we can get into tonight, and we also have to talk to a lot of council about how this whole council is operating then as well. But I want to unpack that email from the perspective that in one of those side conversations where I felt like we got to a place of like understanding of how we are going to maybe represent each other uh, when there was public perception out there and some of those things. You know, one of the things that you said to me was that on the solar issue that um Ryan need to be held to higher standard. That's what that first comment is all about. And that his project need to be different. He's the mayor. He should be treated differently. And my response was, I think he needs to treat him like a um, actual resident, an actual landowner. Like, I think the same as your business should, same as I should be personally, and that we should be able to work through some of those things. Right around the same times when that five oh thing came out in the paper, right around that same times when some came into our chambers and talked about maybe an event that you had with the buyer um, post the vote or potential rep or whatever it was. When you talk about a higher standard based on public perception in one case on a solar and then you don't apply it in the same case as there is the potential public perception on the golf course, that's where I start to erode trust on like what, like you can't apply those differently.
So, so what option would be for you to come talk to me and say, hey, what's the story with your son's graduation party? And I would have told you that my kids have been at that golf course for the last twelve years, thirteen, eleven years, every single summer. My oldest son graduated in twenty twenty two. When I asked him, where do you want to have your grand party? And this is two years ago. Just just give me a moment, please. He said, well, the golf course. Great. We'll have it the Friday before graduation. My youngest son, who is a year younger, says at the party, let's go ahead and book mine. Great. Let's do it. Okay, so like is my feelings on the golf course from the standpoint that I want the golf course to remain a golf course the way they are because I have a personal I've seen the positive um what a positive place it can be for kids in the summertime and for residents in general. And I've seen my kids and their friends benefit largely from that, from that golf course. Absolutely. Is my having a party there relevant to my, I mean, these decisions were made way before the golf course was even on council or the city's radar in terms of selling. So can you just, my point is, if you just come and ask me, I'd have to clarify.
My, my issue isn't that the party, my my issue isn't the party, my issue isn't what even what I said in the response that I know what you said of why you wanted to vote for it, what you just described, keeping it a golf course and all those things. I don't, I don't think and the public will will take this in a different way, just like they did the other night on a different issue, or they'll will jump into the perception of, I think you voted for the golf course for those purposes of restaurant um, biking and some of those things. And I chose to move on rather than than not doing that, where it becomes an issue for me is when you're, you're saying public perception means that we have to treat his project differently because of solar to me, based on public perception of conflict.
I think, I think maybe.
Go back and, let me finish though, please. Um, when you go back to that, I feel like if you apply that back, then yeah, you probably can still step back from that vote just based on that same comment of standard of a higher standard based on public perception. And that has bothered me since that point in time, so.
So because I was planning a grad party, then we should have abstained from voting on the issue. I don't, I don't see that there was a clear conflict of interest there. Um, but as it relates to to
And that's definitely a council member's fault. But I'm telling you, I'm just trying to be open here in this conversation, what bothered me about it, what what I was frustrated about. We had staff present, presented in a staff, you know, when they presented on it, said it needed fifty to seventy five thousand dollars just to get up to code. Was what in the presentation, one of the questions I asked at the meeting was about, like, is it out of code? Right? Nobody else asked that question. And if you're having a party there, tho- those things that rolled with like, what is, what, what, what is going on here of like, if that's gonna be a statement, then why aren't we all asking questions on it, especially someone's gonna have an event there in a few weeks? That's a pretty big deal to have an event there. And so, yes, tho- those things have sat with me. These things started six months ago. Um, and five months ago, and it's been building, and it's probably time. I'm glad we're having this meeting because I need to get it off of there, so I don't have an emotional response or frustration based on an article that felt was, you know, in similar nature of misrepresentation.
So, so I hear you, and I I think that, you know, it just when I kind of addressed the solar, he said, and my intent around that was we needed to be careful. We, we had um, somebody that had a, somebody on council that had a a project. Um, and I wanted to make sure that there were protections in place so the optics didn't look like we as a council were making this decision to support a specific project, and that was my concern. That is why we went forward, or at least I voted to go forward with a public public input or survey because I felt like we needed that so that we understood from the public that what was being slated in terms of future projects was consistent with what the public felt was comfortable with in terms of the ordinance. So, so I don't think holding the mayor to a higher standard was what I, was what I said or and maybe what I intended, what I intended was, we have to be very careful and make sure that we're gathering enough input so it doesn't look like we're creating an ordinance around a specific project.
I agree with that. I think you did a good job of that. I think you stepped down, you stepped up the dais. I thought, you know, and we still didn't control public perception based on what that was. So I understand the risk. Um, you know, the when you talk about public comment and some of those things on the solar, we didn't apply that to the golf course. And so it's, as we are applying
We, 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 like, look, we learned big lessons through that. We did. And so honestly, this was the next big thing, and it was, it seemed prudent that we learned from that and gather as much input as we could. Um. Again, I, I think it's not unusual for a media outlet or the newspaper to, if you're the one dissenting vote, it's not uncommon for them to want to call and get clarification on why you're this dissenting vote. I was very clear. I had nothing against solar by any means. It's just I felt like we had taken the step to address the community, get their feedback, taking time to sort through that feedback and potentially, maybe, maybe not make changes to the ordinance seemed the appropriate or prudent thing to do. But that has no, I, I meant no nothing negative or or ill regard for the decision you all made. That, that was just my decision. That was just my opinion related to a specific vote. And I, I think that as a council member, all of us we have an obligation to do that to some just, to some extent.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I think my frustration is how we say what we say matters. And I felt like, I mean, with the golf course, again, very contentious issue. There was plenty of interviews that I did where we could talk about all of the things that were gonna rile up to the county talks about. I've had eight or nine calls in the last two weeks still on the golf course, and I'm saying the exact same thing he's saying, which is it's sold, we're moving forward, it's in the process, it's moved, you know, that decision's been made. Right? And and over the summer and and when they asked about the dissenting opinion by, whether it be the radio interview that I did when I filled in for him and all those things, I had plenty of times to bring up some of the contentious issues or different ways of the dissenting opinion, but I chose not to. And I felt like that was afforded back to me either in the quote that was this summer that was misrepresented or in that one um, that was here most recently. And that's where my emotion and frustration comes from.
So I mean, what is the how do you guys talk about that? Because I, I think the the email part isn't working. And so what?
I wanna drive back to that. And so I was gonna try and pull us back away a little bit, and that you know, Tim and I have served for multiple different councils together now and there's been this element historically where uh, and and Jill brought up a great point, like, hey, if you felt that way, call me, right? Or like, talk. But I, but there's an element of, we have to get to a point as a council and as in five individuals on this council where we feel comfortable calling each other and talking, right? With respect to open the meeting law, absolutely, right? It's not calling each other to say, hey, what are you thinking about this item? It's hey, where are you coming from? Where did you come from on this? Hey, where are you coming from? Where did you come from on this vote or that vote, right? I also can hear in your conversation that this all builds upon each other, right? And we're all humans, like, we're going to perceive things. And whether it's factual or not, it's how we perceive it is going to kind of get locked away, in my opinion. And the next thing, we're going to come from a slanted angle, and it's going to keep building. One example I will share that I I'm frustrated about is the night Adam came for our um. Uh, I think, I don't know if it was the first one or second one, but it was for the golf course vote. I had people reach out to me individually from the public, asking if they can talk at the uh council meeting. I emailed Adam, our attorney, because Anna was out of town, and I said, there's people that want to talk at this meeting. How does that happen? Can it happen? Adam's guidance back to me via email, I believe, was uh you would need to have the council allow public comment. And paraphrase here, but keep me honest, is you requested that I don't reach out to council prior to the meeting. That you do all of that in the public eye and at the dais.
Yes.
You and I had a quick chat prior to council, and you're like, what's on tap? And I'm like, I truly don't know, but there's a lot of people coming in. I since learned that. That a staff member had had made commentary that. I kind of orchestrated that and that I intentionally put that on the public um so that you all had to vote it down. And like, that's absolutely not true, right? Is that a fair?
Yeah, no, that is, that is correct, you know, and had Anna been here, I think my advice would have been a bit more nuanced. But that is because, so I know that there's some question about. Kind of Anna's role, the administrator, we're not going to talk about individuals, but um so one of the tools. That can be used is open meeting law applies to the five council members. And so one of the things that a staff person can do is poll individual. You know, the council individually and provide some direction for that. And so, you know. You did it exactly as we discussed. In hindsight, maybe I could have polled folks, but yes, you're you're correct.
But I just want that low six, again, in your eyes, I I probably would have felt the same way. What is, excuse my language, but what is this asshole doing? Like, you're setting me up to fail in front of the public who's staring at it right now, right? Like, not comfortable, right? But what I as as the presider over the meeting am guided to do now. I think a lot of the the challenge I have, and again, it might go into perception, but. Is just the way in which we communicate today and through a a staff member or staff members, right? This meeting is a great example. Myself, Anna, and Adam. Yeah, I can reference. The three of us had a conference, hung conference call uh about facilitating this meeting, right? Uh, staff recommendation on that call was to uh not record the meeting, right? And we finished the call, and it came out later as, hey, we're in, and actually, it was not record the meeting and have it offsite. We felt like coming to City Hall just didn't feel appropriate. We wanted everyone to feel comfortable. So we we thought the best location was community center. Um, no deviation from that until an email comes out of, hey, it's at City Hall and it's recorded. I said, how how do we get there? Like, what changed? And I was told that three council members wanted at City Hall and wanted to record. I, as an individual council member, never had a question coming to me, would you like it here or there? And would you like it recorded or not? And so I'm here uh like. Wondering like, is it, hey, what? A direction a certain individual wants to go, and then we'll go find three council members to privately give us that blessing based off the case that's made. And then it leaves that, like, that's what's going to chip away any dissenting even further, right? Uh, and so I think we've got to figure that out as a council. I would much rather we communicate. It's challenging. We've got to absolutely respect open meeting laws and cannot have serial meetings. But again, I'm left going like, hey, how did this change? It was staff recommendation, and then what three council members? Like, and again, I can't blame any, I still don't know the three council numbers. But I can't blame the council members, right? Someone's going to reach out to you and say, hey, for this reason, we should do it this way. I mean, that makes sense, right? But the way we, the five of us. Create laws for the community and give direction to staff is hearing each other's individual thoughts on topics. Like, that's the benefit that our community gets from the five of us uniquely elected, that we go, hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And in my opinion, there's far too much behind the scenes that gives direction from. Three, and I don't know if they're mixed up three or always consistent three. But I don't think that's healthy, and I think that chips away at all of us.
I would just say, I mean, as I wasn't called on that either. You know, when when is open meeting while I get invoked through that type of a process? Um, when staffs involve calling for individual members and not all five or doing a poll or some of that stuff, you know, a serial meeting. I, you know, that that's where the difference really bothers me a little bit of of some of that of like. And and I'll say, it's not just that example that he just gives. There's oftentimes I come into the council meeting and it feels like many of you, like, I feel like maybe you guys talk to the council or to staff. A hundred times more than I do. I don't really ever have those conversations, but we'll get into a meeting and you all will have a better familiarity with things. Uh, as if you've had that conversation uh on a topic way more than me. And so I would say, you know, is that what, you know, staff calling individuals and what what, how does that work within that? And how should that work um in a healthy council? Cause from my chair, I feel like sometimes I sit at the end for all four of you, and sometimes I look down, I'm like, I, this is the first I've ever heard of it, and it feels like you all. Are pretty well a student and have thought about this already.
And not to speak for you and what the topics would be, um, I think there's stuff all the time that Ryan brings up or Tim spring up. And I was like, where did this come from? It could be just a random event on or regular round, or it could be something that's development wise or anything. Um, so I think that does happen with all of us. And um usually when I talk to Anna, it's, hey, I'm calling you, I'm making my way around council to call everyone. Um, I can't say that happens, I'm taking her word for it. Um, and I think it kind of leans with the conversation of, okay, so it's time to talk to Anna for five minutes, there's times we talk for forty five minutes. Depends what the topic is. Um, so in my opinion, um, is it? Anything like that isn't directed at one council member. Um, I think there's things that I know both that that I don't realize. I would give them a boat, same thing with Ryan or Tim or anyone. Um, and I want to speak a little bit on the golf course thing. I'll be blunt on it at that time. I was like, it felt like sabotage, I should not say it was. Um, but to make it build off of what we're trying to do here is. At that time, it was, I don't want to say clear, but we had our meeting before that of kind of where we were aligning. But as that night went on, um. It felt like a a public burning the stake. But after that, as I review it, I learned from it, we discuss this council that, hey, we didn't do it the best way. And that's all five of us, not certain members. So I trust Ryan, I trust Chad, I trust Tim and um Joe that were on the same side about that, hey, we didn't go the best approach of doing that. I need to trust you going forward that we're going to do that better next time. Um, and it, you've said it before, it just comes down to that trust, but um it's six months later now. And um I'm not going to hold it against you or you that what happened at that event or that night. Um, and I think we can, we can build from it if, in my personal thing, like Ryan said, I, I care less what any of you say, unless you're directly degrading me. Um, but kind of like Jill said, if you're going against the other four, they're obviously going to search for your reason and ask why. Um, so it it can obviously be turned anyway, but.
And I would say, like, sorry.
No, go.
You know, before a council meeting, I usually go through everything on Sundays, and then I either send in a list of questions I have. Um, we'll recall our Monday morning, and we talk through the questions I have. And a lot of times she's like, yeah, that's a good question. You should ask it tonight. Because other council members probably have the same question, and then she makes sure staff is ready so that they can. Respond in an educated manner and don't feel ambush or not ambush, but you know, not prepared. And so that's just what I, I think that's appropriate to do. You know, like, I have a lot of questions when I go through the material, especially when I was where you are. You know, six months in or whatever it is, it's, there's a lot. And the longer you're in council, the more institutional knowledge you have on history and projects and things that have occurred, and it's easier, but it's super hard. It's super hard. And so I, that just became my routine. Um, in terms of getting, making sure that I understood the content and what was in front of us. And so um kind of getting back to your question about us having more information, if it, if it seems that way. It's because I'm reaching out to Anna to get my questions answered ahead of time. So that I I'm making the decision based on, you know. All the information and not what I'm assuming.
And that's absolutely fair and what all of us should have the right to do. Where I have saw instances where it goes beyond a question is where I I take challenge with it. Um, I've been asked emails uh that are between staff and individual council members. That um July twenty fourth is when the initial moratorium for solar was coming. Was up, and we were going to review it council on the twenty fourth, right? Um, there's emails that highlight. Prior to six P M uh from a staff member to a council member that all of that will get flushed out in the public comment period. At that point, we weren't, staff wasn't proposing a public comment period, right? At the dais. It came out as, hey, we should have us, we should do a survey and 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 go this direction. Um, one can only believe that there was a guidance offered. Uh, second to that, I would say that there was a ROI that was built by staff on the topic of solar. Versus other uses for property. Um, it was highlighted by staff that was never included in the PowerPoint. But I'll share it with you individually, so you could talk to it and hear a couple of points that you could rub uh highlight about that, should you want to. Like, to me, that is clearly going above answering an individual council member's question. And it's really getting into more of directing. On topics and on things that, when we show up on a, on a Monday night for council, like, I believe we owe it to the public to come there and hear from anyone. And consider all the facts in front of us and then make a decision, right? And if the five of us don't have all of those, the same facts that we're basing a decision off of. We're never going to win. We're never going to make the right decision of council, right? And so, again, I, like, that's been on my chest for a while, and uh don't need a response. I just, I want that out there of like, I get frustrated when I see some of that stuff that I I felt was happening. And, you know, you mentioned you come and you feel like, hey, I'm, I'm not as educated. There is legacy stuff. I run with the water tower, like the last council meeting, right? I imagine most of you are like, we're doing a water tower. It's like, hey, we've been doing, talking about a water tower for ten years, right? That's how I had relevance there. Um, but we've got to get to a place, and if we're going to build trust as a council. We all have to trust that we're coming to the council dais with the same information. And that we're all afforded that opportunity to have the same information to make the decision for every one of our votes.
To to kind of build off that, is there something that we don't know and that we won't have the answer tonight that? And I don't know the email you're looking to and who it involved, but when I know something. Especially like kind of internal investment thing, that's important for everyone, I feel like, you know, that, that. That shows sign that I don't know that you don't know or you don't know or any, either them know.
Right.
Um, if there's, I don't kind of brainstorm here, but if there's a, a folder that, hey, here's the relevant information. That, because obviously Rob is filed and his files um that we have access to, um, but. Like, I'm, I'm trying to not rambling here, but I think it's hard at times to know. First, what's pertinent to everyone. Second, does everyone else know? Cause there's things that you got brought up in the community that you know, and you don't realize the importance or unimportance of it, that. I need to know, I don't need to know to make an important decision. So I think we might build, build off that and have more dialogue of better structuring what, what access people have.
Well, and and I think I, so you added that, I I think it's the critical part, the access, right? Like. There's an element of. You know, personal relationship, whether I I feel like, hey, whether someone afforded access to something or not afforded access to something, right? Um, we had a situation in the community where. A community member was tasked with taking down uh what they perceived as offense about some um. Complaints against it, right? I took an opportunity, which all of us had, to go on and look at it, right? Um, I felt like we're going to come, and I'm trying to use this example as like, we're all connected in the community. And so naturally, we all will come with some different elements. But I feel like the basis of what is, what information is our staff providing us is what has to be consistent, right? And the question you ask, you're going to get a response to. Um, but that should, individual council member asking a question shouldn't necessarily invoke staff to change something, right? And or it shouldn't invoke staff to communicate with another council member to say, hey, this question was asked. Here's what we're thinking, like, does that make sense? Like, we've got to have this ability that all of us individually can ask questions, but not be directed. And I know that's one of the things, um, I think you shared with personnel is. Like, at times, there's just this, here's an example from mine, on the Q and A that was put out from staff after the golf course. Like, there's some things that they're, they're absolutely inaccurate that highlight me directly. One was communication with culverts, absolutely wrong, the way it's worked. And I was, I asked for it to be corrected, and I was told that um that's how we believe it was done. And if you can prove us wrong, then we'll go back and correct it, like, is that really how we want to interact? Right? I wasn't afforded the same opportunity. I felt like others would have been afforded in that situation. I think others would have had a different response. And again, emotions were high during all of the golf course. We can all recognize that. But at the end of the day, like, we've got to put emotions aside and make sure that we are treating each, each individual the same. And staff is treating all of us the same or affording us the same opportunities.
And I would agree with that, that we need to be afforded the same opportunity, the same information to everyone. Um, but I want us to also get for like the solar survey that went out. I've heard people with opinions that it was, questions were totally directed for people to go against it, and I've heard another opinion that they were totally directed for it. And I think that's going to happen in every situation, just like Jill sees that one way and Jed sees it another way. Um, so I think there's improvements that need to be have had. Um, but we, we're never going to get rid of that personal element. Uh, we all have interests in different topics. Um, and not saying personal, but just kind of how they come about and the information that we find and that we have access to. And again, it is access to, and I'm not saying that I have access to anything that people don't, but just really access in society is what I mean. Um, and you kind of perceive it that way. So I think we need to, one thing about following protocol, another thing about. Just getting your feelings hurt, I think, and we need to separate that. Um, and not saying people don't have the right to be treated fairly. Um, but again, it's like I said before, when you have one vote against four others. Um, the chance of sharing your opinion is going to seem like that article is against you or against um other members, so.
If that sounds internalized, I think, I mean, I I do, I do think. Again, we we have an obligation as council members to, I mean, in that particular situation. With what should I have said? Why, why did you dissent the vote? I mean, I said what I said in the meeting. You know, and so.
I, I'll let me play that forward, but um. Future topic comes up, um, Tim, you're dissenting vote, and you offer similar feedback, right? Um, the four that voted for it. Double back and say, no, we, you know, like. A response to that could publicly could be, we absolutely heard, we listened. Um, and here's the reason we voted for it, right? Like, it can turn into a volley, and I'm glad that it hasn't. I'm glad that we're here tonight. But it absolutely can turn into a volley, and and it has in previous councils in Sartell. So again, with the opportunity to speak publicly. So again, with the opportunity to speak publicly, we all have to just recognize that that potential. And I'm. You're everyone's entitled to what they want to say. I'd also be be cautious because. Like, all of us have been misquoted, right? Um. I don't, right? I just get super like. A little antsy when when that comes out, but um. Who passed it?
And I think when you got with the R O A example. I felt the same way. It was like, whoa, that's just like out of the blue, but everybody else seemed to have perspective on that. And so I do think it's important that we flush out a little bit more of, you know, when does it? Issue with the whether it's recorded or not recorded and i- if if the, you know, staff is in the middle of that, talking to three different council, but not all five. What does that look like from an open meeting law perspective? What does that look like from? I'm holding board governors. This is where I think board governors can really, really help us when we have some rules or prohibitions that will help it. And by the way, if you've if you've heard, all of you have heard me push this. Since early this spring on what I really thought could help us early on, when you talk a little bit about. Um, you know, reaching out, I've reached out, I've reached out prior, I've been told, we don't take, um. We 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 don't ask for perception on on council packets, okay? Uh, on the actual survey itself, um, or the Q and A that went out. I thought it was understanding that we're all gonna have a chance to give feedback, right? Gets sent to us at three, it's a fourteen whatever page document, sent to us at three, I'm typing feedback. Of where places where I felt like, hey, this could be worded differently. This is not what I feel is accurate and some of those things, trying to give feedback to staff. And it's published while I'm typing feedback. And I forwarded on it and said, well, I wasn't looking for your feedback. I was just giving you a heads up. At the meeting, I asked them. Direct questions. By the way, I also reached out to Rob because Anna was gone and said, give him a heads up. Hey, I'm gonna ask him tough questions, please be prepared because I do care about staff. So I did give him the heads up. And at the meeting, I asked these questions. I follow all of you. You're the only one, Joe, that that had a problem with how I asked the questions. Alex didn't have a problem. Um, Tim said he didn't have a problem, Ryan said he didn't have a problem. Um, I get an email. Basically saying I was attacking and and uh, you know, just basically just questioning my own character integrity of how I ask questions and what I ask questions. So I, you know, this where it makes me feel like an individual council member, I do do the work. I do read all those things. I always have notes. You see my notes every single night when I'm there, Alex. Um, I'm always prepared for those things. Um, but if I can't ask questions prior to the pack, if I can't answer. Prior to a Q and A, if I can't ask them at the meeting without getting land-based to the next day, uh. When when am I supposed to ask the questions? And and that's one where, yeah, I will ask them at the dais and do some of those things. But I just want everybody in this room that did know, I I've tried all of those methods. Through this process of being able to ask questions and get feedback or uh, this is a question I have and, you know, and. That's why I asked them at the at the dais, because I I did, I wasn't not getting a response and that and that my job is what I was elected to do, I believe. Um, but I shouldn't get um attacked before, and that was the first personal uh, me uh, email that I sent to personal committee, which is now six months ago. I haven't heard a response on, um, but no, let me finish. I think it's really important that. If we're going to have a fair, if 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 there's gonna be a conversation with staff to two council members on the same issue. Or three council members on the same issue that has discussion topics within it, has voting matters within it. I think that opens us up to at least the erosion of trust. I don't know about the open meeting law, but. Um, from what I read, I just, I I don't think that's right. Um, I've never had a forty-five minute conversation with Anna on the phone prior to a council meeting. It's not, it's not something that happens in my world. Um, so, I I don't know, I, those are the things I think we need to flush out and get to a place where I think. If it if they're gonna be individual conversations where stuff like that comes up, then there has to be a mandate that it gets to all five council members. On prior to the meeting, so it doesn't feel like everybody else has more information. Um, or there's been a conversation that's had prior to the meeting because exactly what open meeting law is supposed to prevent from happening.
Well, and I want to clarify a little bit on those, if there's there's a thought that. The three of us, because I feel like it's directed this way, have ever jumped on a call together or anything together. That's not true.
No, it's not.
Or they're told how the person's voting. Um. One topic, obviously, the golf course, we uh happen to agree on that, but I think goes clear from the first. Um, workshop that we had that we both, we all, um, us three were in favor of it. Depending on certain things that were discussed at the council meeting and then, um, so. I feel like. And not you or anyone just in a golf course opinion that when we're having those different opinions. Everyone's thinking that that people that were in majority were getting feeded information. Not just us three, not just you two, there's decisions when me and you agreed that. I think people view that other people are getting feeded information, which. If it, at least for the council perspective, that be intentional, I don't think at all. I can't speak for all staff and one information, but anyone else knows. But I think if we can at least. Me personally to kind of build this up, start with the trust with all of us that, hey. When we go like Ryan said, we go to those dais at on Monday that all of us are up there to make the best decision for the city. That we worked during the week to have the same information that everyone else does to make that best decision. Um, and for me, that's just a clear starting point. Um, there's obviously many things that don't want Anna, Rob. Harry, everyone else, but um. I think I think we need to trust each other first, which um I feel like. Isn't isn't strong right now on between a lot of us. Um.
I think the same perception was about Ryan and Solar and myself. I mean, that's why I tried to make a comment at the other night of like, you know, I, you and I, it's it's interesting because I I probably have less. If we were to have the the conversation about solar as an energy source in the city and what. We know about it from a decommission and what contamination and stuff, I have a lot more discomfort personally, but I looked at it from a general perspective. But I I would say the same thing back, like, I think there was a perception that I was, you know, all about the solar because it was his project and that's just not accurate. And I I I actually would have been on the opposite side, had we had the other conversation probably. Um, I looked at it from, you know, this is the project that started back last October. Um, you know, the organs didn't come up then. We all voted five oh on our own project for a city project. The organs didn't come up then. Okay, we were five oh, we have more um residential issues on that project than we had any other time. And it's fine, the timing seemed off, or why, why is it such a big issue now? But we went through the process, we we spent all that time. Um, and I felt like we came up with a good ordinance. I I mean, it's ten megawatts, it's pretty limited, right? We're almost gonna be at our max. We have huge setbacks, like. Those are places where I felt like we we got too good post, and then another reason why that article bothered me so much is like, I actually think we did go through the process to a certain degree of getting. A really conservative ordinance compared to other, I mean, staff presented us soon June and said, this is the most conservative ordinance they can find out there. And that's what some of the people were saying in public hearing that were experts as well. But I do think that perception exists other times as well, when I don't think that's fair as either, and I think that's important.
And, you know, my comments, and maybe that's not how it was interpreted again, it was just. We went through the exercise of doing a survey and I felt we as a group should have dissected that and determined like, hey. Does land use restriction make sense? Because if we can figure out a way to to. Have land use restriction, then maybe we don't have to have as large of a megawatt cap, right? So like, are we shorting ourselves in in certain areas on on ordinance? That was my point was like, I think we we needed an opportunity to dive into some of those areas and look at like. Now, now I think the ordinance is gonna come back because we potentially have to increase the megawattage and. Um, we have to put the financial piece in it and so, and that's fine. It's that was, that was the intent of of. Why I descended the boat, again, not because I didn't support solar and and I know I've already, I repeated that. Um. I think. I I think what I'm hearing is that everybody has a different way of preparing for council meetings. Some of us should like call staff with specific questions because. I don't under, I personally don't understand something or. There's pieces of information that. There's holes or gaps I can't quite fill in, and so, um. Uh, you know, that's my approach. I'm certainly not suggesting you're underprepared, you're underprepared. Anybody else is underprepared because that's not their. Have it there, there, the way that they prep. Um. I think that we've talked about, it's fine to ask questions at the dais. It's like, I don't think anybody here is saying we can't. Um, so I I would you say. Something along those lines and I I, you know, I don't think that anybody's saying you can't ask questions at the dais, it's like. We should be having those conversations publicly, right?
That's where my frustration with the lack of responsibility personnel today, when I forward the email saying, hey, this seems a little bit out of line, a little bit attacking. It don't feel as that out of line and what the council mayor may not know. Um, you know, on top of that, you know, none of us should be subjected to this, but every single one of my um oversight committee. Every single one of my board members get an anonymous letter basically saying the same thing. It it's it's it's. And I'm just trying to do my job. And so none of it should be said after that. I shouldn't have been subjected to that. I have a strong board now governance that was. Uh, able to deal with that type of uh, an attack from an honest perspective. Um. But that's where that's where that arose. It's like, it's been six months. I I forwarded on and and if you want me to have trust and go directly to staff. Read the email, like, it's it's pretty aggressive.
So, so she, I think. She felt similarly, right? It was clear you guys were not communicating clearly. We had a conversation. I think Ryan, you circled back with Jed and you circled back with Anna and said that we felt as a personal committee, the next best step was for you two to meet together. And if that didn't pan out, then it would come back to personnel. And in our conversations with Anna, she's communicated at the personal level that. She had attempted to schedule with you multiple times to make that happen.
We've had plenty of conversations and I moved on. We've been working on the community center thing and as and I had left in the past, it still feels like an open issue to me from. The actual email in and of itself, because when you say you can ask those questions at the dais, if you read that email. Can't ask questions at the dais because it feels like.
What I'm saying is we had asked Anna to meet with you and.
Can I share just a little perspective? I I. Obviously, this is what I do on a day in and day out basis.
Yeah, that sounds fun.
Yeah, um, but, you know. One of the things I've talked about with. All the different city administrators I've worked with and and when I've had these other discussions at the council level. Um, you know. There should be some kind of inherent effort. By staff and by council to make each other look good. I'm not saying, you know. Little smoke up people's ass or anything like that, but I'm saying, um, one of the ways that that. Really manifests itself is by asking those questions in advance of the meeting. So if you're going through the packet, like. What's what's going on here? So that that accomplishes a couple of things. One. Um, it allows staff to engage with you in a way that, you know. If you're not comfortable or you you um. Don't wanna, you know, have a discussion or ask a question at the council that, you know, might be remedial or folks question. Well, don't understand this, that the staff's there to give you that information. Um, and and part of what I think should be reciprocated as part of that is. Um, if staff are are giving you that feedback, giving you that information, that you're going back to the council meeting in public. And asking maybe that question again, and I think that serves a couple of things. Um, one, it kind of. Is a little bit of a backstop of ensuring that, hey, I went and I asked staff. Something and they gave me this information, I'm gonna ask it again in a public forum, so that the rest of the council and all of the public present. Are hearing and seeing that information. Um. And two, that's how you make your staff look good. Now they're prepared, you know. They're they're hopefully gonna give you a crack answer, gonna demonstrate for the. The residents that you you have top-notch people here, they're prepared, they're ready to answer questions. Um, and I I think from the flip side, where things start to go sour with staff is that, um. You know, sometimes questions have the potential to be viewed as kind of gotcha moments if if staff aren't prepared or they're left scrambling. Um, you know, there's an equal amount of stress, I think, for for many staff people. Standing there um at the podium as council members might be when you're getting asked tough questions by council. Or by residents at a public meeting. And so, you know, it's that effort to. Um, give folks the best opportunity to shine. I'm not saying that that shouldn't be a, you know. Doesn't mean that you can't ask questions, because of course, in the course of a discussion as you're working as a council, if you're taking resident feedback at a public hearing. Naturally, things are gonna come up and you should be asking those questions, but I think if you help keep that in kind of. Uh, the back of your mind, and I hope that's something as you work through your governance policy that you kind of build into that. Um, you know. That's how I've seen staff, council, relationships, really be kind of. Put to their greatest potential is is when those kinds of dynamics are are fostered among everybody. So. I know that that's maybe a little bit, um. Different for every person, council and staff on how that works, but.
Yeah.
I just offer that as something to think about.
And it's spot on, and we've talked about that through multiple councils. Um, one thing I would I would articulate on that is. When you're gonna ask those questions you've already asked. It might suit all of us well to say, hey, I asked these questions earlier, right? So that it's not perceived differently.
Yeah.
Right of, hey, I'm asking a question that I just thought of and oh, look, staff's well prepared, right? So I think for the public and for all of us individually, hey, I asked these earlier, here are the questions, right? Second is. Um, I think we all have to to know that, like, serving our community is greater than the five of us right now, right? It's also setting up future councils and staff for success. And there will absolutely be a point in time in one of our elections where there's an activist council member that's gonna join. They're not gonna get along with staff, right? We have to ensure through our board governance that they aren't, they could vote no on every single item. They still have to be afforded the same information, that the people that are very polite and showing staff in the best light. We still have to do that. Through the golf course, for me, it was a little bit of a reflection moment. Um, there's a previous council member that felt like uh, they were slighted on their time as council. And they were a dissenting vote on on many items, and I never really understood their perspective. Being a dissenting vote on a pretty hot topic, I reflected, I'm like, boy, I do feel like we don't. As a council and a staff, respect the dissenting vote. And I'll maybe offer it to you here that you might be feeling that now, like, hey, I just voted. I voted my own against it and I answered why, like, why are you guys coming at me? That's kind of how I felt in. And and then I recognized like, hey, a previous council member tried sharing that same feedback of, hey, moving forward, make sure you respect the dissenting. Right? Um, and so for me, like, as I hear you talk about that, yeah, absolutely. But with the strong caveat that even if the council, individual council member is not polite and votes no. They still have to be afforded the same information.
Hmm, and I think it goes the other way as well. It needs to respect the ascending vote. Golf course, for example, we voted that through in the last comment where I can't believe this council won't listen to the public opinion. And that's as far from the truth. That night, that motion got voted down, but there's phone calls, emails, all that stuff across the board. So I think it should go both ways. Golf course is one example, same thing with Jill's. Um, so I think it needs to go both ways.
I think sometimes too, from the, I'm hoping we get at this in the board governance is that, and again, I, this is where. And I have some familiarity, a very similar job where I report to an elected volunteer group of people, right? And so. Um. I think it's the staff's job to prepare. The dissenting and the approving both sides of the coin when they're presenting the information on both sides and then. Give their recommendation and why. And I think it's really, really important whether, no matter who's on the ascending, whether it's five one. Sometimes even if it's five oh, some in the community is gonna have a dissenting vote. So I think it's really important the way and. And I think the majority of time what I've seen on my time at council, they do a pretty good job of that, but I think there have been times where it felt a little bit narrative. Based based on maybe the the majority going in that direction and. Um, I think that's something we should, I hope that we get into our board governance of kind of an expectation of. Um, I think that's something we should, I hope that we get into our board governance of kind of an expectation of like, do your best to. Do this from a comprehensive, you know, um, dissenting versus a, a sending opinion and then give your recommendation. So that all sides are represented in, in the information that we're doing. Um, the golf course didn't feel that way to me. You know, from a respect, from a staff perspective, there's a plenty of follow up questions that I wanted to ask. But in, in res, out of respective like, hey, this is going to make them feel under the fire. Um, there's still questions I have on that and we will move on, but, um, I think sometimes in that way that it's presented is important as well.
I think that how we prepare for. Individual council topics. Comes down to. I like to obtain as much information from both sides of the. Of the topic. Dissenting and supporting as possible. And, and I'll reach out to individual council members and have conversation about. Well, I want to hear the voice of why or what the, what, 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 what's bothering you about this? And then it's, it's up to us individually. To make that decision in our heart of hearts to say, I support this or I understand what you're disagreeing with. But I still think the. Bigger picture of this is we're going in the right direction or not going in the right direction and for. And I have had the. You know, a couple of different topics that have come up over the five years I've been on council. That I have to go in and talk to staff. I'll talk to whatever staff member happens to be in that area, if it's planning, admin, whatever. And finance and get an understanding because I, I learn, I can read that packet and at a certain point. It just starts to get to be fuzzy numbers coming at you, right? So I have to go in and say, hey, Rob, or whatever, leave names out of it, you know. I don't understand this financial part of this. Or I don't understand. You know, where is the public perception coming out and we can't control the press. The press is, is something that is just. They're going to pick up what they pick up, right? We could say something and it's taken out of context. Or we could say something that they, they want the controversy. They sell papers for a reason, right? I mean, they want that. They want this quote in there because they want to know why did someone disagree with everybody? And that's, uh, did they pick anything I set up at the Dais? No, they didn't say one thing about it. And I've also kept my mouth shut at certain times when they go up to interview me and I just know that I'm not gonna. Get anything out of the beneficial, out of giving this reporter a, a, a soundbite, but they do take. Stuff off the dice that is out of context and. Uh, they like to drive that and, and we're talking about the news leader here, which isn't the. The solid reporting as it gets, but. Um, I think that we all come up with our own personal opinion and if Jill descends, dissented on this. I, I respect that actually. And, and I talked to right after that we. We moved into that motion. I moved into the motion without realizing you had. Not said your piece, but then that's why we got into the discussion after before the vote. So we got a little bit of a. Explanation for everybody to come in and say why they don't agree. What they picked up in the paper. Is just what that reporter decided he wanted to write about. And did he say anything about me or ask me? Did they call me? You know, whatever. No, but does that bother me? They didn't get both sides of the story and why I think that our ordinance and, and. My point of this ordinance, let's say the solar one was. Yeah, I saw the survey and said, yeah, we want to, you know, resident, residential properties need to be. But I knew that in our ordinance and I studied it and listened to it and as it crafted it, I knew our ordinance was going to protect the residential. Properties. It just wasn't going to happen. If you were to get into this, the, the points and. Positive and negatives of our ordinance, I knew that that. Was going to. Cover all those topics that were coming back from the survey. And, and it was a, you know, we don't want residential. Is that something we need to? Take out along the way? No, the ordinance already addressed that in certain setbacks and whatever. And I think I explained that at the end of the vote. Saying that I think all the concerns that were expressed through the, the, the solar. Or, or survey. Were addressed in our ordinance. And if it, if it, if I was wrong. Then I guess it's just my perception of, you know, what I thought our ordinance could protect us, but. But did they pick that up? No, they wanted to state straight. You know, quote out of the, out of Jill or the dissenting vote, necessarily have to be Jill, it could be any topic and whoever descends. They want that. They want that headline. They want, oh, it wasn't unanimous. So. It's our perception of what we think and, and we make the best judgment. I think what. What you said the night of. When we're closing and saying that we're making the best decision moving forward as for the city as we perceive, you know, we're, we're moving forward. In the best light and, and. Do they want to, you know, accuse us of having backroom conversations and, you know, whatever? Yeah, I have had conversations with staff and, and just one on one, but that's truly for my own understanding and to, to perceive, to get the perception of what. Really is the, the issue. So. How we do it, we can read or we can. We can read it and then go ask questions and then state our, our reason at the Dais, or we can just vote on it in whatever way. If someone wants to go and ask me after, great, but. I don't know, it's. Interesting. I mean, I, I, this article did not bother me at all in, in the sense that. They're going to ask the person that votes against it, any of us that votes against it. I mean, you two were quoted a lot in the golf course. I mean, they came after you guys because they want that. So. Hard to control the narrative to the press.
Again, I, I want to figure out a way that. We can. Uh, not let these fester. I don't want to speak for either of you. But as I listen. To both of you talk about different topics. And they all kind of circle back to historical things. I have some confidence that. Post the golf course. If all five of us would have had this exact conversation here. As a council and flushed out, we're around the golf course, how it went down and actually hear from each other. My perception is that probably doesn't bother anyone. And I'm, I'm, I don't want to put that. On you to answer, but. That to me felt like it was. If, if it's not that, it was just going to be one other item. And, and maybe that's between Tim and I. If things are festering. In the future, if we don't nip them in the butt quickly. It's going to be just some random comment that Tim, you're going to make at the Dais. It's going to set me off. And we're all going to circle back to this. And so. I really want us to figure out a way and it's probably individualized, but how do we open up the communication one on one? So that, hey, if I perceive something, I'm comfortable calling you Jill to say, hey, Jill. This doesn't make sense to me. What are you thinking in a non derogatory way, right? I also want us to get to a point, and I, I think we owe it to our community to get to a point where. Hey, I know this is a hot topic. Or passionate for Tim. And. I probably going to. Reach out to him afterwards to let him know, hey, this is why I did it that way. And so I also don't need to wait for Tim to reach out to me like, what the hell, right? Or wonder. That's us dynamically working together. We'll lean on you to figure out how we can do that. But in the absence of that, we're never going to function. And if we can't function. As five individuals conversing individually. Then I say the best option then is to shut everything down and all of it's at the Dais. And I think that gets super ugly and super messy. But. We can't have, my perception, we can't have this middle ground where some people are comfortable talking, some people aren't. Some people are getting this information, some people aren't. We've got a level set. You brought up a great point, like, we've got to start with trust, right? I think we need to amend a couple of things and then start with trust. But trust is something that we all have to continue to work on. Right? And it's not something like, hey, I trust you today. I'll trust you for the next three years, no problems. We have to work on this. We have to be open and honest with each other. And whether that's at the Dais or whether it's individually. We, we have to do that.
I, Tim, when you were talking, you said something that. Like I will one hundred percent own because. I had concerns, um. About some of the feedback in the survey, right? And in the agenda, we went through the survey feedback and we didn't have any conversation. And, and I will own that, like, if I had concerns and you said something like, because you've been part of the planning. Planning commission discussions around that original drafting and origins and obviously had. A lot more information than I did, right? About the reasoning between why and. The intent behind some of the things, but that was, that was a great opportunity for me to be like, hey, guys. What do you think about the fact that seventy-six percent of residents don't want it in residential? Like, let's dissect that for a minute. And I, I get like, there's a balance of what comes out at the Dais versus not. But I will own the fact that I should have. Asked that question and been like, help me understand what you're thinking. And I do think we should have more dialogue like that, like not attacking, but just helping each other come to a place of understanding. And I, you know, when you were talking, Donna, I mean, that. Was a good place to initiate those conversations.
I'm often talk to. Councils about giving each other grace. Anna actually has got a better saying, which I'm stealing from her and that's assume best intentions. And I do think. Kind of to your point of. Allowing folks to. Be cool headed about it and assume that people are asking just to get. A better understanding themselves, not to. Not to put people on the hot seat. I think that probably. Will go a long way, you know, and, and that's maybe one of the tenants that you work into your governance policy.
And one hundred percent agree, like. So much, so much. Goes back to communication, right? Like we're all talking about. And if you have a problem with me, if you have a problem with me, I have a problem with Tim. This is acting their skills. But. Totally kidding, but like.
Again, we're going to work on trust. We're not joking there.
But we should be able to have those conversations. If you don't like something I said in the paper. Call me and I will walk you through where my head was at and that it was about. Me and my decision only had nothing to do with anybody else here or anybody else. It was just what I felt like. Was in the best interest of the community and this particular ordinance. Um, but I. Welcome other perspective and be like, hey, well, it made me feel this way. I would apologize and say, next time I will really try to rephrase how I say things. I mean, I. That's the only way we learn and grow and, and. Again. You know, figure out how we work as a cohesive unit.
And I want that too. I, I want more clarity though. On, because we're, we're sitting here talking about, well, I'll call you and talk to you about this, or I'll call you and talk to you about your solar thing. And I've already talked to Ryan about. Something else on solar. Tim just said, I'll call and get someone's opinion, just so I understand where they're coming from. Right? All, you know, what open meeting law says is it talks about, you know, the course looking intense, right? So every conversation I've had, whether I'm talking to you or not, I think I've been in conversations where they've been very intentional not to. Cross that line, right? And that's, that's what I believe happens on the phone. You know, so like. We're saying we had to talk more, but then that just opens up more of the red flag. There's.
Two people.
Just the way that you talk.
I mean, so I think to the extent that. You want to get somebody's perspective on a particular issue. You can talk with that individual. Now.
But you can't talk to two without raising your red flag. It doesn't, that causes it.
Right.
So.
Three's party and that's a problem.
So my point is that we just said that we need to talk to each other more, that, that opens up that thing. I, I think.
That's just about a specific issue though, like between me and you or between me and Alex. Like, hey, Alex, I don't understand what you, what you meant when you said this the other night. That's just between me and you. What I can't do is turn around and be like, hey, Tim, I talked to Alex and, um, he's thinking this because of X, Y and Z.
Yeah, but like the way he described.
You, I mean, right, so.
You described it, it's about disseminating information. It's not.
It is. It is. And so. You know. Personal interactions, questions, I mean, I think that's. Totally appropriate, but where. Where that bleeds into a problem is when it's. I'm asking two people about. Personal interactions on an issue. That's something that. I'd urge you to. To steer clear from the. The serial stuff where. Hey, Alex, I talked to Tim and this is what, that, that, that's clear violation. The, you know. Me calling Jed, getting some feedback, maybe me calling Alex. That's, that's a gray. That's not across the black line, but it is so incredibly hard to defend against. That I just urge you not to go down that route. And that's where. You know, on the topical issues, you can lean on staff, not for staff to go. Ask two other council members and report back to you, but. Um, you know. It is appropriate to talk to staff and say. Hey, here's what I'm thinking. Are you picking up on similar concerns from the council? And, and there's a way to have those discussions in kind of broad, general terms that. I think. I mean. It's wholly compliant with the open meeting law, but still within the spirit intent of it too. Um, you know, because part of what staff's job is, is to. You know. Tea stuff up for the council and, you know. Their staff, staff don't make the decision. It's not like they're the puppet master. But part of their job is to get a read from the council. And tee that up in a way that they think is, is best for the council to be able to move things forward. And so. You know, the kind of dissecting both sides of an issue, yes, that needs to happen, but at the same time. If there is. One really outlining opinion among the five. You're not going to, I mean. It's just an impossibility to devote the same amount of preparation and effort. For maybe that outline opinion. Than the majority, if it's, if it's kind of off the wall and. That's.
I struggle a little bit. Um, when you talked about staff getting a feel for where everyone's at. If that's done in a workshop. Makes total sense. We all get the opportunity to hear from each other. And the information presented, I, I think I lose a significant amount of trust. Across the board when. Something's brought forward. And it's like, let's. Why are we talking about? There's already. There's already an understanding that three people agree to this. Why are we even presenting it at the council meeting at that point to have an official vote? It's.
Let me, let me, let me speak to that a little bit because I, I think it is, when I say that, it's not to. It's not to, to grease the wheels so that that vote just goes through. It's to help. Kind of flesh out. For staff on what they're picking up on as the important issues. It's not to. It's not to. You know. Make a decision behind the scenes. It's to. Help kind of foster that decision-making in the public. Set?
It, it does. I, I think we're in it. We're in hopefully just a, a, a spot. Publicly, not just so tell, but. Where people are. Transparency is the hot topic. Right? And. I'm sure everyone gets it. Meeting members will ask us like. You guys, how'd you pass that? You didn't really even talk about it. It's like.
Yeah.
Well, we did. Like, we talked about it, right?
Yeah, I get that. You're like, you just passed it without talking about it. Like, we've spent the last three months talking about it in different workshops or environments or whatever.
Yeah. And so I think, again, I think that's part of like workshop. But there's also situations where we didn't talk about it in a workshop. We didn't talk about it at the Dais, but it went through and we were all kind of educated. One up. And, and that's where. I don't think we do ourselves favors in that regard. It's. In a ideal world, in a perfect state, and that's not where we live, but it never will, but. You know. Staff should. Staff should look at things in a black and white perspective. Of ordinance. Right? And be able to make recommendation based off ordinance or goals set by council. Right? And maybe some other inputs there. Uh, and then I feel like it should come to council for. Deliberation on said topic. And here's our, here's our findings. Here's the reasons here that, here's what we as staff considered. But just like the other night, we had, we considered an item from the community that our staff didn't support. And to me, that's, that's ideal state. There's things we as five members consider differently than the black and white of what our staff would do. I'd love for us to get closer back to that, right? And. We had great conversation on that particular topic in workshop. Staff didn't feel like we were voting against them for just on a whim. They understood our perspective and our reasoning for it. So. Maybe I'll pause on all that for this board governance as we learn more. Maybe that's where some of that could be solved, but. Um, I just, I get really apprehensive and, and it puts staff in a super hard spot. Because. It'll, it will appear inevitably to one or more council members that there's politics being played. And or to the public that there's politics being played if we aren't having so many, like more of the conversation publicly.
You made a really good point earlier that I, I think is worth kind of repeating again in the context here about. If I'm a council member and I go ask staff questions and I ask it again. To kind of put that caveat out there saying, hey, I. Before the meeting, I had some questions and I talked to staff and I think. You know, that, that helps the public, just like you said. You guys passed something without talking about it. To take that, you know, conscious pause before you take that vote to say. We worked on this the past three workshops. Does anybody have any other comments before we take a vote?
That statement needs to be out there a little bit more clear. I think most of us will say. And I talked to you or, you know, Rob, I talked to you before this week to get a clear understanding, but you know, this is what you told me. So there is that dissemination of information publicly. And I, I, I do think that there, there is sometimes where uh, a topic we all, you, you asked for discussion and we all just sit there. And, and then all of a sudden we say, okay, we're gonna vote on it. And then it goes, and it feels like. If I were watching this on TV, I'm like, those people are so not engaged in this topic. And I think I got a little bit of that on the solar part. I was like, are you kidding me? Or even the golf course. I'm like, we've talked about this for eight months and. Because all these people showed up here tonight because they just caught wind of it and they were saying, you know, whatever, we didn't hear about it and whatever. I'm like. Yeah, that might be on the system that they didn't, they weren't aware of this, but it also is on the fact that. Being unprepared is not an emergency on my part. Pay attention more, right? I mean, you wanna tell that to people in the public. You're like. We've been talking about this. You have to pay attention. Just because you heard about it yesterday and you show up and you wanna change things. It's been out there and maybe that, you know, in today's world where we have social media, and I think we do a good job actually. Spreading that, you know, topic out there. And I remember we had a conversation about. Putting up signs on land that we were gonna eventually uh, develop as a city or whatever it was, you know, coming here soon. This little sign that, yeah, that was.
It was anytime we were going to change.
Zoning.
Zoning change. We felt like we need to put a signs of the.
And, and that, and, and I, I don't know if we still do that. I guess I haven't noticed it or seen it much. Um, we haven't changed much since then, but um, I remember that was people like, well, hey, what's the deal? And then I got more questions on that. Hey, you know, people call me up. What's this sign saying that you guys are changing it? That was, you know. Probably the most feedback. I mean, yeah, social media, Facebook, whatever, we post stuff out there and I think the ordinance on this. Solar stuff, I mean, we went overboard, but I think that was mostly a pendulum swing from what happened in the accusations that came up with the. Golf course. So. I, I, I think we'll find a happy medium on how we get that message out there and discuss it. But I agree with what you're saying is I, I think that that sometimes I felt like, well, that was weird. We just all voted and no one talked about it and. People like, you not care about this? This is my life, you know, whatever. It's like, no, no, we've talked about it. Quite a bit. Um, but yeah. Something about that statement.
I agree with that. I think. But I wanna hear you still on, talk about. The polling from staff to individual council members. You know, we just talked about it with the meeting a lot and, and I know what you said earlier, but again, I get a red flag, again, it could raise a red flag. But at the end of the day, I was talking about relationships and pass votes, so that, that ultimately is the way I see that. Um, while you raise a question to, to, to me, uh, an email by itself and what I've been reading a lot of the way I have is, it's not constitute that. I wanna understand better though, when we start talking, cause I think when we're talking about relationships, we're saying we're gonna call and I hear what you're saying too from like, hey, this is what we're gonna talk about. Great. That, and that's what's gonna happen. It's still gonna be red flag. Um, and some of those things, because to your point, um, it, it's hard to understand what exactly was said or was not said or, or, or all those things. The perception uh, is created, but I wanna know from the, the, when, when the staff is polling. What you said earlier, three council members and not the other two. How does that open us up to from an open meeting law, especially if it's on something that's about pretty much a little prior to the meeting?
Well, I think, um, so I think topic does matter. Something like uh, meeting format. Is. A little different than, hey, should something be on the agenda, that kind of thing. Um. I do think best practice is if, if staff is gonna pull the council, they should pull the entire council. Um, I, I think that is a, a, a fair thing to, to do. Um. One for. Um. Ensuring that everybody's voice is heard, part of what we're talking about. But also too. So that. Staff have. No argument that can be lodged again against them of, of some kind of favoritism. So. Yeah, my advice would be if there's gonna be polling, it should be the entire council.
And again, that was the open meeting part and Jack can only speak my personal opinion. I've been in for. Three years now and I've never had a conversation with the council member or with staff saying, hey, what's. Are we three two? Are we five oh? What's our number here? I've had, obviously in the discussion with council members and the staff of. We will survive on this. Um. But I've never. Had it. Someone tell me, okay, we're at three two right now. Which way are you gonna go or two two? Which way are you gonna go? Um, I've never had that conversation. I haven't gotten the, um. The feedback that I've, that's ever happened. I can't, maybe it has. Um. But like I said, my two and a half years and. Um, prior to the last six months, um, I feel like. Everyone's operated great together for the most part. Obviously, there's times I voted against something which you get very rate to. Um, but I feel like there's. I feel like it boils down to the lack of trust in staff. Um. But I think a lot, I should say a lot, I can make assumptions. My personal opinion is that it comes down to the. Personal view you have on a topic. There's. Almost every presentation that comes up that has any attention to it is. You don't agree with that one, you're gonna think that they made that against your vote and against your opinion. And that's just, that's natural to think that way. I don't think it's right or wrong. Um. Just like the example I gave on the solar survey, two people see it totally different. And that's, that's always gonna be the case on high, high. Um. I, I don't know how highly debated profiled topics. Um. And like Ryan said, there's, there's good times and bad times and like the golf course is great to be three, two and have it very debated. Did you go best way about it? Possibly not. We do learn from it. Um. But I, I, I think that. We can't get lost too much in the human element part of it and people are gonna view things differently, um, just like people in the public are gonna view it differently.
And I would say similarly, I, uh, there's been no conversation where I asked Anna. Where people are sitting on a topic. I did ask her. When we were talking about this meeting. My personal opinion was to follow the ordinance we just passed because we just passed the ordinance. And so to me. Seemed like we should.
The policy.
I would say my response to him was the same, same. I just never had that with him. I, my same, my response to him was my only concern is if we start getting into this major topics, that's something we probably don't wanna record. It was my biggest concern with him. It was like. Hey, like you're gonna have to get some coaching or like talk me through, like I wanna make sure there's some things I wanna talk about and I have to make sure that. We, you know, do it appropriately. Um, my issue isn't what I think. You guys might ask, my issue is, is if, if staff's going and saying, what do you think? What do you think? What do you think? And then coming to you and saying. It's uh, majority. And nobody's ever asked me technically a vote. Or, you know, uh, prior to a meeting and, and that is, if you wanna read the, the open meeting law, that's just the clearest, less gray. Uh, violation of what we're talking about here as it relates to like, wait, and that's, that's not okay. Like that should be a conversation we have here. If that's even the debated topic altogether, so we can talk through it. Um, so I can say what I said to you, uh, which is, hey, guys, I think, you know, from an HR perspective, we have, you know, we wanna protect our staff and. I think you've seen that in my, even the emails to the personnel committee where I talked about there, I've talked about, hey, we gotta protect our staff and then trust the verified. You know, this is what they deserve. This is what they, they should get. It's probably run my company as well and through discovery process and different things, but. Um, when that, when that happens, I think that opens us up into other areas that are just as. Even less great than in from my chair. And that's why I'm asking this. We're gonna move forward from here. We have to make sure that we have some very strong boundaries on some of that stuff.
Well, and one thing I would say that it's a very slippery slope that I don't like that we, we go down is that private polling. There's one narrative that's offered, right? And then we cast a private. Consensus or guidance from there, right? I think Alex, you might have highlighted earlier that anyone that's a dissenting at that point is. It's gonna feel like. You know, there's a mountain in front of them. And so all of us get an email tonight with an opinion from a staff member that says, hey, would you support this or not support it? Any one of us that say, hey, we want, and three or four others say, yes, we would. When it comes to the dais, that one or two people that are dissenting privately are gonna come to the dais with a whole stack of reasons. And have a more passionate conversation to make sure that the others feel like. They got more than one view on. And that, to me, that's a little bit human nature is like. They're voting that way because they don't know this and this, right? And so then we're gonna publicly sit at the dais and go, I wanna make sure you know this before you cast the vote. I just don't see. How that's successful for any of us. Like doing it that way, unless it's an urgent matter where we have to make a decision now. Like. We should be waiting for the dais for all of, a lot of this stuff. Right? My opinion. I don't, I don't know how other communities do it.
No, I. Fully agree that that is best practice. It, it's. Like I said, the polling part of it, not to make a decision, but for staff to get direction. Is within the confines of the open meeting law. Does it, particularly when there's other. Concerns. Around governance, does it undermine that? And that, that's why I think it's important as you work through the governance stuff. Remember that this is not just about. What the five of you do around the council dais. It's. It's a guiding document for staff also, and a guiding document for how everybody at the table interacts with staff.
I believe it will be really good for this council.
You know, I don't, I don't know about this polling question. If topics come up and, and I. Have a discussion with staff member on it. I mean, I don't think there's yay or nay ever comes up in the conversation. I think it's. We talk about. You know, the topic and the facts and then. I don't know if there's, I mean, I don't remember ever being asked yes or no in a private conversation to. To that extent. I've had conversations where I said, you know, here's my perception or this is what I think, but. Uh, there's never been a, you know, individual polling vote on something. Um, I think that I hopefully express my, you know, where I'm at on the topic and then maybe they take that back. As info and saying, okay, I know where he stands on that. Um, but it's never, you know, so and so, or Ryan's already on board on this. What do you think? Uh, that doesn't happen.
Uh, and I do think the polling part, I mean, just the word poll implies some kind of, but. Where I think it is most helpful. And I, I can't speak to what Sartell staff do as a common practice, but. Um. You know, where I think it's helpful is. Asking, hey. Is this, is this some information that would be helpful for you in the council packet? Particularly, I mean, you have pretty attuned staff. They have. They listen to everything that you say. I mean, to try and flesh out where folks are. That's part of having good staff. And so, you know, they might poll people to. Help them discern how to best tee stuff up. Um, and so I think that is wholly appropriate. But yeah, if it is. You know. Evolving into some kind of. Uh. Process where there's like pre-decisioning, that, that's, that's. Not culture.
Yeah. I don't feel like that at all. I, I, like I said. Nine times out of ten, I'm calling Anna because I have questions. There's no. Calling me preemptively or, you know, unless it's like she has a question for me or something, but there's not. It's me. I'm the one who's calling her and bugging her because I don't understand something or I have a question, at least a question that leads to question. And. So. But it's never. For. Suggesting or. Trying to influence me in any way in my decision.
Right. I only brought it up based on what he said earlier. Specifics. It's, I'm not talking all the time. I think polling, it's done, should be done to everybody. I think it can undermine the dais, so there's risk with that. I get it. And I'm not saying that happens the majority. I'm talking about a specific. Is instance where it was, you know, said it's going to be here and not a great, whatever you can say it, cause I.
Cause I, I think anything further is probably gonna get closer to a employee review that I wanna stay away from. Um, there's a different place and time for that, so.
I think that's where we need to start building trust though, and I'm not getting back to that topic, but. We. The three of us at least have spoken on that there isn't any polling. And yet it keeps coming up that we can't be having the polling. So I'm hoping. Let's not ignore the elephant in the room. It feels like three against two in my opinion of how we view things. Right or wrong, that we're right or wrong.
Sure.
But. If. First saying that there ain't no polling happening, we call for direction. Should I be calling Ann or anyone else in the city about. Getting. An opinion on how I should do something? No. But I also shouldn't be under the expectation. I wait until I get up to the dice, dice, if you can say that word, diocese. That's not right either. To gain clarity on something, not have a full understanding of it. If I'm. Calling someone at city hall and I get information that I feel like others don't have that information. Yeah, you have the right to know that same information. But I don't think we should be discouraged from calling to gain clarity on packets. Um, and I feel like. And I'm speaking good for myself that we need to start with trust. But I feel like we're trying to be as transparent as we can here and we ain't getting nowhere. And that. Um. It's already been two hours and we haven't gained any ground. That's my first opinion, but.
Well, I, so I'll say I feel like we have, uh, my church feels like it's getting going. I, I'm not saying that there's polling happening or not. I'm just talking about, I was asking about that specific instance, right? I do feel like the dissemination of information is unequal at times. And that was a question I wanted to bring forward today. Um, to better understand it of like, you know, and, and how that made me feel through the process on some pretty contentious votes on. Stuff of like, whoa, we're good out of, out of that perspective, so.
And then hopefully you have taken away from the fact that. It is individually. Responsible for going and getting that information or that opinion or the facts. I mean, I'll come into city count or city, you know, the city offices here and. Go talk to individuals directly, just so I get a better understanding. And so, yeah, in that. Process, there is some information that comes back to me that might feel like I'm more prepared or. Um. Or legacy information comes up. I'm like, oh, yeah, that's right. We did talk about that. Um. I, I, I think that. I don't. Think. There's been. In my perception, there's been a. Dissemination of information to certain people within the council. It's more about us going and getting the information we want from. The source, if it's, even if it's a citizen, you know, sometimes it might be some resident. the source, if it's even if it's a citizen, you know, sometimes it might be some resident that we ask or talk to in a random conversation that gives you information about it, but I I don't, I but maybe I'm being naive to think that there isn't some additional information that's being sent.
No, and I'm just additional information. All that, you example of course of it was responded back to me by staff of like, hey, I my my job is to go with the majority of the council. This is kind of the direction that they're going in, even though I'm asking a dissenting opinion, you know, class thing, something. So it doesn't, it doesn't get to unless I bring it to die, so it doesn't get there. So that's why I brought it to die. So my point is, is I think hopefully some way, somehow we can get back to something I said, which is the person who wrote from a high level issue of like, I hope we can get to a place where in our board governance, it really talks about the the effort and the intent to get to a comprehensive um, presentation that represents both proving and dissenting opinions whether, no matter where the council is, and then our staff recommendation based on their expertise, right? Cause they have expertise in things that we don't have expertise in and that's their job.
And we hired them for that.
Exactly. And I think they do have a majority of time. I didn't feel that way on some of these issues. And I think that's something that as we go through the core governance really has to be something that we we hit on as a uh really a prohibition, um, that would be a prohibition within the current model, so.
I absolutely agree. It's upon all of us to ask questions and get our answers solved before council, whether that's done privately or publicly, I would love that it's done publicly, but we all have the opportunity to reach out to staff privately.
And each other.
And and each other, sure.
To some extent. To some extent.
Good, Kevin. Um, but and I I I'm not interested in putting any uh individual or individuals on the spot, but I'll go back to July twenty fourth. Prior to that council meeting, what staff was recommending to us was an approval of a solar ordinance that planning commission had vetted and recommended approval. Staff was recommending approval based off planning commission's work, right? Staff highlights to individual council members, I think a lot will get flushed out in the community input. There was no mention of a community input in the staff recommendation going into that council meeting tonight, right? And so there was going into that. It's not, it wasn't a situation of someone was asking a question um, and getting an answer. There was a, hey, here's the direction we're gonna go, but it's not our rec our official recommendation. And to me, that undermines so much of what we are tasked with doing. And and that's a challenge, right? And so in the, if if I feel like that's happening and then there's it's passed to me demonstrating that it is happening, like that becomes a problem, right? I should have should have reached out earlier and highlighted it and talked about it. This goes back all the way back to July. But I don't want us to confuse the, I absolutely am bought into, you've got a question, get an answer. If you don't, if you don't understand the answer, keep asking. But I have problem when it's reversed and it's not part of the information that goes out to every other council member.
But remember that staff and planning commission, like they have to have reasons to not recommend approval, right? We as council don't have those same requirements. And so we have to apply or make decisions somewhat contextually too. And so, um, staff would have to say, yes, we we recommend approval of of the um ordinance, but as council, we can go okay, hold on a minute. Should we be getting public input? Should we go a different direction? Should we, so how I hear that is you know, we as council could contextually recommend something that they can't and that it's subject to that feedback, right? So that that's what I hear. I totally see what you're saying, but I also, just like with the landscaping issue that came up, they had to come forward with a recommendation to deny, right? But we as council can take a very different perspective on.
And all I'm saying is the sharing of information, cause it's a very similar email that went from staff to council members. Midday, on the day of the meeting, that highlighted that there's going to be a public input session at some point on this topic. But and again, I felt like, hey, we all had great conversation at the dais and then it was on a whim that it was recommended that, hey, we do a survey. And then it's like I I and I took that for granted for a couple of months that, hey, that was just an idea of the dais. And then I find out later that, hey, that might have actually been orchestrated and any trust that I have erodes, right? And again, upon me to reach out prior to this format to say, wait a minute, that doesn't make sense. But again, I I would say through whatever we're calling this process, if we've got to stop that, right? We we can't have dissemination of of information to some and not all. And we can't go to the dais when we're supposed to hear the facts publicly and any testimony publicly and already have a direction we are gonna go before we get, we sit down and call immediate order, right? There's some challenge there.
And I think that's, again, to bring up the cliche word of trust, um is I as a operating or operators of our city, I trust our staff. And maybe, um, I don't wanna say I trust too much, cause I don't wanna make that sound like a bad thing, but when I get information in the packets or otherwise, my assumption is they're doing their job and it goes across the table. And that might not be the truth. Um, and I think that's something that we should work on or frame or space can set, kind of like I talked about an hour and a half ago, that everyone gets the same pertinent information.
We're just circling wagons at this point, I feel like.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. Your your meeting, though, you you gotta call it, not me.
Yeah, I mean, we're, are there any takeaways that we want? It felt like a good, maybe debrief session.
I think you've laid some groundwork for working through the governance policy in terms of kind of fleshing out.
And what I see is that we we probably hopefully walk out of this room and we all have a better understanding of where each other's at. Um, and some of the things that are going through our heads. And I think for two hours and fifteen minutes of investment, that's probably worthwhile. But maybe to your point, I don't know that we've solved.
Yeah, I don't want, yeah, I don't wanna make that comment, make it seem like we didn't solve anything. Um, me personally, I I trust everyone in this room. Um, we all give a family time. We all spend a lot of time in our city to try to make it better. Um, so me personally, I don't have any personal issues. Do we disagree on stuff? Yeah, that's that's natural. So I I came to me tonight with no certain items I wanted to address with anyone or as a group. Not saying there's nothing I can improve on and maybe that I can do wrong in the past. That going forward is, um, I'm here to better myself and better everyone else, so. Um, and I hope everyone feels the same way that we're all in for the same intentions and that we can all improve in certain areas, but.
And I don't know that I came in with expectations over of what we're gonna do tonight. It was more of a forum of, well, we guys don't talk and I hope from here with legal's guidance, we all can have individual conversations to further any lingering issues. And work to solve them, but um, we are all five represented equally. Yeah, like we've said enough.
Well, I one topic, and I think, you know, I I wanna throw out there and it's it's kind of going back to the opening statement that Jill made about the email from Jen to her and the appropriateness, inappropriateness, I should say, um, of just the dialogue between two council members. It's, uh, that isn't something I see as professional. I think if you have, and I think we both agreed that come to me and talk to me about it. Don't just send me. I I would have been put off by an email like that directly at me and, you know, including me of my own statement. Um, but just, just so we know, please talk openly with concerns we may have. And the the tone of the accusation or, you know, the statement isn't appropriate by any means. So I wanna make sure that we keep it at a professional level in a dialogue, one-on-one, ask the questions. And I mean, I I didn't want that to get buried by the other conversation we had, because I think that was part of the deal that fostered this meeting. And we just have to keep it at a certain level professionally and within our ordinance or policies, however, we wanna state it, how we have conversations and express our dissenting opinions to each other. And and not that it is appropriate anytime to do that, but I think we should definitely keep that communication open at all times.
And I think one-on-one communication with a solid foundation is probably a lot different than one-on-one communication with a somewhat fractured foundation, right? And that's, we all experience that in our daily lives, right? Um, real quick, there's a article on a publicly on a neighboring city, uh, talks about board retreats. That's something that we've historically done is, um, historically, we've done the League of Minnesota Cities. Their governance workshops, I think I call it, um, and we as a board attend that and it's a chance for us to build a personal relationship. It's been frowned upon the last couple of years of we shouldn't be doing that, but I liked it. I I think you and I attended a couple of them. And then I see a neighboring community calling something a board retreat. Do you know the extent of that or options?
Yeah, and I've been part of those types of meetings, but they're they're public meetings, they're open meetings, um, all the same processes apply. You know, and so the public can come. It's pretty uncommon. Sometimes the public's presence can reduce candidness if if there's specific issues to talk about. I'm not familiar with with the league what what they're doing, but um, certainly the league puts on some tremendous training and I think any opportunity cities have to take advantage of that is 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 great. Um, you just might have to be publicly noticed.
I think, yeah, I I think what the general public doesn't recognizes uh, and it's different than any other board I've served on is that the overwhelming majority of all of our conversations happens at the dais, live on TV and looking at a microphone, not looking at each other like we are here tonight. Right? That's not natural communication in my opinion, right? And so I I think there's means for us as a board to get together just as a board or a council and and look at each other and have conversations. And and some of that is, we're actually doing business, it's posted. Other is I I think about, and again, pride perception of reality, but if we're at League of Minnesota Cities, an educational side of it and we're not discussing any business at all, but more of just having dinner together outside of the workshops. Like to me, there's value in that, that I get a perspective of where you're at. I understand that your kids are coming home from Christmas or for Thanksgiving, right? Like there's a human element that I think might be missing amongst some of us that helps build this overall trust and understanding. Now, we all are busy in our own personal lives and so I I know that's tasking, but I think as we look to twenty twenty four, I'd love for us as a board to explore that. How do we how do we do that? And I'm not suggesting we go out to eat at a local restaurant and the community sees five council members sitting together. I don't know. Again, I'm trying to break down like the walls of just not being at the dais so much and and maybe even it's like our workshops, like.
As I say, I I work with a number of cities that um, they have a council meeting and then they have a workshop meeting and their workshop is is a wholly different format. They're not sitting at the dais, they pull chairs around a table and they do have that, you know, sitting across the table, that eye contact. I mean, yeah. That that doesn't facilitate meaningfully engaging with people, cause you gotta be, you know, talking to folks way down the other end. And so that is certainly something that, um, is well within the ability of the city to structure that. There's always concerns, um, you know, it's kind of a pendulum. So some, some of those cities that I've worked with, when they do those workshops, it's set as a regular council meeting. And so you're not limited to the agenda that's posted for a special meeting. And so it becomes very easy for that to devolve into a whole bunch of stuff that may not have been on the agenda and it's perfectly fine in a regular meeting to add stuff to the agenda at the meeting. And so then you start to develop transparency concerns with the public. So just know that there's a, there's a balance to to that, too.
There is, yeah. Yeah, and I don't wanna belabor the point. It's late. Um, I just, I wanna find ways for us to meaningfully engage and not sit at the dais and have all these, try and have all these conversations.
Great.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor? I didn't allow. What? You didn't allow this.
I'm asked for discussion every single time.